Well, I call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Jerry Ferguson of the Prescott Valley Police Department, a chaplain, and then a pledge of allegiance will be led by Carm Staker.
Let us pray. Almighty God, your word says, "Give thanks to you, for you are good and your love endures forever." Thank you for your word which says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." Thank you for leaders who established our national motto, "In God we trust." Thank you for this Prescott Valley Town Council which acknowledges your presence at the beginning of each meeting. Thank you for your protection of all our first responders and for their dedication to their assignments which they carry out with compassion. Thank you for our military personnel and for the memories of those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. Thank you for the citizens of our town who helped make Prescott Valley one of the lowest crime rates in Arizona. You tell us, oh God, that if we lack wisdom, we can ask of you and you will generously give it to us. I ask that of you tonight on behalf of the council as they contemplate and take action on the various items on the agenda, and I thank you for providing it. You are God and we are your people, and we bow with grateful hearts and thank you as our Redeemer. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain.
Would you all please join in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, we go on to a roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skug?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we go on to number five, proclamations, Poppy Days and Water Safety Month. Would you read the Poppy Days one first? You're here to... Okay, go ahead. That answers that. Diane?
Poppy Days, May 18th and 19th, 2018. Whereas America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as the symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of this memorial flower, whereas I Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim May 18th and 19th of 2018 as Poppy Days and request all citizens to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on these days.
Thank you, Diane. Comments, Vice Mayor?
Well, because I have so much snow on the roof, I've been through a lot of these. And I want to thank you ladies for keeping this alive because I fear in the future there will be generations that won't even understand what the meaning is. So I honor you as well as thank you.
Good. Who speaks first?
I would remind you that in the past we've had a couple of our junior members of the American Legion Auxiliary come and present poppies. Well, we've been replaced, but we are replacing them. And there's no way we could do that. But anyway, they had something they had to do tonight and couldn't be here. So we thank you for the proclamation and we thank you for the opportunity to be here and to keep this memory alive. It's so important. And I'd like to introduce to you our President of our American Legion Auxiliary, Barbara Pigeon, and she's going to talk just a little bit about the poppy. What did I do? Okay. After World War I, there were so many dead soldiers and the fields and the burial fields were filled with red poppies. This became known as significant to our veterans and the soldiers that we have lost. Since 1920, the American Legion family and led by the Auxiliary have protected significant significance of the flower. And they went to Congress and requested that we have a national day called National Poppy Day, which is a Friday before Memorial Day. And this year it's going to be on May 25th. And I would like to read the Flanders Fields about the poppies. In the Flanders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row. That mark our place and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing fly. Scarcely heard amid the guns below, we are the dead. Short days ago, we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Field. Take up our coral with the foe, to you from failing hands we throw. The torch, be yours to hold it high. If ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other veterans care to comment? Rick, Marty, Mike?
Yeah, I just would want to say I have a little snow on my top of my roof as well. It's a thing going around here. But I'm old enough to know that the poppies are a traditional way of recognizing this event, and I'm proud to be, you know, a veteran as well. And so I thank you for taking the time to come out and making us all aware that it's a red poppy day. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Marty?
Yeah, just to let everybody know, okay, I am a member of the American Legion Post that this is the auxiliary from, and usually you will find one of the Legion members sitting with the auxiliary member in front of the different locations to give out the poppies. So it's, I mean, for us that participate in it when we're sitting out there, it's a fun experience. And for the public, it's a good education experience, especially when the kids come through the supermarket and we're able to educate them on what it's for. So come on out and they ask for donations, so please give generously. The money goes to a good cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Rick?
Well, it's been my experience that most of the time you don't even have to ask for donations, that most of the people that show up there know exactly what they're doing and they generously offer the donations. But again, I would also encourage everyone that passes by a doorway where these folks are sitting, that they remember the fact that they represent every veteran of the United States. And they're there, this is their main fundraising event, and they do a great service for all veterans. So please be generous.
Thank you, Rick. Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to check, we have folks watching at home and we also have folks here this evening in council. If you are a veteran or have someone in your family that has served, would you please raise your hand? Oh, many here. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary?
You know, I'm forever reminded because of what has been given for this country. You know, my father was a prisoner of war in World War II in the Baton Death March. And it's really by the grace of God that I sit here today. But in the process of his freedom, many lives were taken as they tried to free those prisoners of the Japanese. So I live today because others gave their life to save my father, and I will be forever grateful for my life.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comments still?
The veterans and disabled veterans make these poppies. And the monies that we receive from donations from the community are used for veterans and their families. So it's kept locally and we do use it for the veterans and their families. And I'd just like to thank you, Mayor Skug, and the council, and those of you in the audience for being here and supporting the American Legion and the Auxiliary and what we stand for. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity.
Well, thank you, and I think it reminds us, freedom is not free. It was expensive. Thank you so much. National Water Safety Month. Would you read a proclamation?
May 2018, National Water Safety Month. Whereas the citizens of Prescott Valley recognize that swimming and aquatic-related activities relate to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people, and whereas the citizens of Prescott Valley understand the essential role that water safety education plays in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries, and whereas the citizens of Prescott Valley are aware of the contributions made by the recreational water industry as represented by the organizations involved in the National Water Safety Month Coalition in developing safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, home pools and spas, and related activities providing healthy places to recreate, learn and grow, build self-esteem, confidence, and self-worth, which contributes to the quality of life in our community. And whereas the citizens of Prescott Valley recognize the ongoing efforts and commitment to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues and initiatives by pool, spa, water park, recreation, and parks industries, and whereas the citizens of Prescott Valley understand the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to their families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to natural resources. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 or 18, where did I get 15, as National Water Safety Month in Prescott Valley, and I urge all of our citizens to support and promote this observance.
Thank you, Diane. Vice Mayor, comment?
In my youth, I taught swimming and lifesaving, and this is so well-written that I'd be wasting my breath to add anything to it because it says what needs to be said. But most of all, thank you, Brady, for coming out tonight to receive it.
Brady, comments?
I'd just like to thank the council for their support of the Parks and Recreation Department, and we do have our swim lesson sign-ups starting May 19th at the pool, 8:00 a.m. So it's a perfect time to promote Water Safety Month and remind everyone to get out there and safely and responsibly enjoy the bodies of water we have around here.
Anyone in the council care to comment? Mike?
Yeah, I think it is a very important topic and it's something that I went through as well, you know, I think as far as learning how to swim. And as we know in Phoenix, you know, I think it's a very serious problem up here because we have seasons, not so much, but I think it's an important thing to know how to swim and then enjoy yourself during the summer. So we appreciate the message.
Good. Anyone else? Any other? Brady, we appreciate that, and keep up the good work. Keep people safe, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the scheduled announcements and presentations, Quilters' Child Show. You ladies are up.
Hi, I'm Linda Marley and this is Jan Adams. We are co-chairs of the 2018 Mountain Top Quilters quilt show that will be held here at your Prescott Valley Event Center on June the 1st and the 2nd. And we're here specifically because Mayor Skug has agreed to come to our quilt show and present a ribbon that will be his favorite quilt in the show. And we're asking, we're kind of upping the time. If you can be there at 8 o'clock on Friday, we'll let you in before the crowds and you'll get kind of a personal tour and it'll be less hectic. So we have complimentary tickets for you and your guests to come in and view the show and present your ribbon. This is the third time with the biennial quilt show that's put on by Mountain Top Quilters, and we're headquartered in Prescott, but we have members, over 200 members that come from Prescott Valley and the Quad City areas. And we anticipate having about 1,200 to 1,500 people that attend the show every year, and we love the facilities. We especially want to thank you too for the personnel that we have dealt with at the Prescott Valley Event Center. Scott Rubdke has been just phenomenal and really worked with us as we tried to put this all together and trying to do some special exhibits and just making accommodations for that. So it's just been wonderful working with him. He has a very good employee there. We are, this time, having a couple of special exhibits, one is which are some Hopi quilters that are coming down. And so there's two groups of ladies that are coming down, and they're going to, one of them is even spending the night. So it should be a good boon to your economy. And so that'll be extra. We haven't had them attend before, but we do have people that come from all over the state to attend this. Our quilt guild has been in existence since the early 1980s. Like I said, with over 200 members, we're a nonprofit organization. And we are involved in quilting, educating quilters. This year we started a youth quilting program that we meet with young girls and young men to teach it that are interested in learning to quilt. But primarily over the years, we have also made four or 500 quilts a year that we donate to various organizations like hospice and veterans and CASA adoption services and those kinds of things. So it's really an honor to get to be a part of this group. And so we'd like to give you your tickets, and we also have some bookmarks here that'll remind you of the dates and the times, and I'm sure you'll see it on the marquee outside. But thank you. It's just a joy to have our quilt show here.
Oh, thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions, anyone? Comments? Do you have any other comments? Any to add? Yeah? She did it all, huh? Good. Well, we sure appreciate that.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to seeing you then Friday morning.
Good work. Great. We look forward to that. Okay, we'll... Chamber of Commerce, Brady, it looks like you're at today.
Evening, Mayor and Town Council. So as we know, Prescott Valley is always growing. I would just like to take this time to notice a new addition to our business community, our commerce community. We've got the guys from Blue Collar Customs here to talk a little bit about what they do.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. We are Blue Collar Customs. We are located right in between Hope's Attic and Hung Right Doors. Myself and Jim Lekowski here, we've served over a combined total of 44 years on active duty, just retired from the military, and this is our new home. And we also, we have Shane Probst, he's also an owner with us, locally grown here. And our vision that we have for the community is to be able to just prosper, bring a lot of pride, and then also help out the veterans that are around here. And whatever we can do in a positive manner to help out, that's what we're here for. That's really all I have.
Jim, Shane, either one of you have any comments? You have to pull the mic over.
We are Harley-Davidson Motorcycle Mechanic Business here locally.
I'd just like to say that 24 years...
Pull the mic down just a little bit.
Are you saying I'm short? 24 years in the service, you kind of lose, you don't really have a home anymore. I'm from Chicago, and when it's time to retire, I did a lot of research in, you know, Prescott Valley, Prescott area was just beautiful. It's where I wanted to bring my young daughter and my family to. And so thank you guys for having an outstanding city and stuff and allowing us to come in and enjoy. Thank you.
Welcome. Jim? Brady, any comments? Any here, Shane?
A separate comment. So while I have the microphone, I figure I would do a shameless plug for Prescott Valley Days. They're putting up a carnival in the middle of town in Entertainment District. The carnival's going to be open tomorrow with tons of festivities. Saturday, we have a parade. The carnival is open tonight, you're right. The festivities start tomorrow evening, but, so the carnival's open tonight, tomorrow night, all day Saturday, all day Sunday. There is a parade happening Saturday morning following festivities that will lead you clear into 11:00 p.m. So I just encourage Prescott Valley and all of you guys to get out into Entertainment District this weekend and check out Prescott Valley Days. Help celebrate the 40th anniversary. This is not the official 40th anniversary celebration, but it will be in conjunction with, so we're really excited about that. I have information if anybody wants it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brady. Okay, we'll go on into comments, communications. Council have any comments? Jody?
Thank you.
Comments, communications? I'll start with Mary.
Okay, I would like to let everyone know, and before the gentleman from Blue Collar leaves, I would like to let everyone know that we will be putting up the flags on May 25th, and they will be up through May 28th for Memorial Day. These flags will be approximately 340 American flags. They're about eight feet tall, and each one will have a name of a soldier that we have lost here in our state of Arizona and that was born in Arizona. So I invite you gentlemen to come and join us. You can, I'll keep in touch, I'll make sure I reach out to you. And again, thank you so much for your service.
Good, thank you. Laura?
I want to say to you gentlemen, I hope we don't let you down. We're very much a family and business-oriented community, and I hope you benefit from both of those aspects. The other thing I wanted to share, Brady mentioned the parade, well, if you look closely, there's going to be a red slipper parade, and you're going to recognize some faces. My face will be green because I get to be the wicked witch of the West, and I've already had a go with that costume and had such a good time. So you need to come out and support all of the floats in the parade, but when that red slipper comes by, you better wave at us.
Marty?
Well, Jody and I shared an experience a couple of weeks ago. We participated in the Fire Ops 101. So for those of you that have been looking and seeing these, Jody and I, we earned our helmets, we participated. There are four scenarios that we each go through. One is you go through the smokehouse, one goes, then there's a cardiac arrest that you have to handle, there's an extrication, so you tear a car apart, and you also have to put out a car fire. So it was, it's an enjoyable and wonderful experience, and I'll let Jody elicit a little more information.
Anyone else? Jody?
I so appreciate what our firefighters do and medical as well, and certainly, you know, when they go out, it's not just the fire truck. Oftentimes, we're going to see an ambulance with them on these calls. But what they had to go through, I was amazed, Marty, and it was a lot of work. It was hard to hold all the equipment, the tank, it was 40 pounds on my back. Larry, I don't know, could you have done that? But it was awesome. And I just really have a new appreciation, and I for one want to be an ambassador for our fire department and for the wonderful things that they're doing. I appreciate it.
Yeah, they put us in full, in full uniform. We had the full face mask and, like Jody said, the tanks.
Laura was just reminding you.
Yes, and there was gear, yeah.
Gear, is that right, chief?
Yes, sir.
Anyway, you know, like Jody said, the tank is about 45 pounds, and then you're wearing about 15 pounds of clothing, and the sun is out there beating heavily, and you're working. And we only did it for a few hours, and these firefighters do it on 24-hour shifts, on and off. And yeah, it, like Jody said, it's a totally new understanding of what they do and what they do for us in the community, and they deserve every ounce of praise you could give them, and thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other?
Thanks, Scott.
Mary, got a comment?
Well, I had the opportunity also participate, I believe, in the very first one. And yes, it was, it's an amazing experience, and there's not enough words to say how much we appreciate our first responders.
Any host hasn't? Mike, did he have any comment? No? You didn't? Where are you? Any from?
And I have, and I have one more comment that's separate from the firefighting thing.
Okay.
So something on participating in, in two weeks, we're going to have an Arizona Off-Road Promotions racing team here. We're going to have some UTVs, some quads, and motorcycles, and we have Dan Reese in the audience, and he's the person in charge. Could, could we have him come up and talk about it a little bit? Is that okay?
I believe, I'm going to say yes.
Come on up, Dan. He's got to, he's got to head up to flagstaff, so I'm trying to get him out of here so he could finish his ride.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, town manager, town clerk, thanks so much for giving me a few minutes. AZOP Racing is how we're known, Arizona Off-Road Promotions is our company name. May 26th and 27th Memorial Weekend, be racing all day, both days. Last year was the largest event we have ever put on as a company in over seven years. We had over 500 racer entries and great support from the community turning out. And we're trying to thank and give more support to the local community. We've discounted our booth prices dramatically for all the local companies this year to encourage them to have a presence at our event. And it's really a family fun spectator event. It's only $10 for adults, $5 for children, children under five are free. And it's really a great way to spend the weekend with the family and see some exciting motorsports action go on. They always build a very fun section right in front of the spectators that's quite entertaining to see with the mud jumps and stuff. And I hope to see everybody out there, and we really appreciate the support of the town and the community and everybody here that makes this event possible each year. So thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
And just so everybody knows, I'm going to be the emcee for the, for the weekend, so I got roped, I got roped into it, and it's going to be fun working with Dan and seeing this. So come on out and you can hear me and watch the racing. It's going to be a lot of fun.
Marty, thank you for your support, and I look forward to working with you. It's going to be a blast. We're going to have a great time. Thank you.
I think there was, thank you so much. I think there's one other announcement. Somebody had comments on, Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, we are headed into our Prescott Valley Days. Lots happening with our 40th anniversary as a town, and I wanted to just let people know what's upcoming as well. We have Movies Under the Stars on Friday evenings, and that will be starting up also on May 25th. June 1st, though, is the special one because we will be having The Wizard of Oz. And also Prescott Valley, we... And also, Prescott Valley, we love our dogs here. Oh my gosh, we are going to have an event, Mayor, called Wolfstock. And that is on June 9th, from 10 to 3, at, here in the Prescott Valley Civic Center. And there, with that, for our theme with The Wizard of Oz, we will be having a Toto Lookalike Contest. So we want people to turn out on that. And, and I do see Ben here, and I don't think he looks like Toto. However, I do know he won an award recently for the Arizona Economic Development Association. And was it for new, remind us what that was, Ben? Was it the first new developer?
The new member of the year.
New member, new member.
I stood up at the wrong time.
Very good. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Ben, you have an announcement, comment?
I do. I believe included in your agenda packets was a copy of a letter that was drafted on behalf of the mayor. And this is in regards to our request for a new post office. I met with Postmaster Matt Mills a few weeks ago, and I just wanted to kind of recap a little bit of our, of our meeting. Mr. Mills agreed that the size of our current post office may not adequately serve a growing community moving into the future. He did note, however, that he feels the current needs are being addressed between the two post office locations. That was one area that, that we did not agree on. He noted two primary challenges with establishing a new location. The first being, of course, the well-known financial difficulties of the USPS. The second being that there are two other larger communities down in the valley that also have, are underserved by their post offices that, because of their size, he feels may get pushed to the front of the line, but he just wasn't sure. The post office signed a new five-year lease with their, their current location over near State Route 69 and Robert Road. They signed that last year, so we got about four years left on that. And their location over on Second Street, that's going to be coming up for renewal in November. Mr. Mills anticipated that, given that they re-signed the lease for the, the location at State Route 69 and Robert Road, that they would likely re-sign that lease as well, though he was not sure what the term of that would be. We discussed the possibility of the USPS acquiring, for instance, the former Haggins or some of the other vacant big box space in town. He did note that when the Haggins specifically first vacated, that he brought a proposal to the powers that be within USPS to move the post office into that location. And at that time, in addition to budget constraints, one of the other concerns that was voiced by his superiors was that that location would not adequately serve the community, being that their service location spans up into Paquito Valley, Coyote Springs, and not so much down into areas of Quailwood and those areas of Prescott Valley. And so, he felt, and he was just speculating, but he felt maybe someplace like Glassford Hill Road, equidistant between 89A and 69 would, would be more appropriate to serve the area. Though he did note that, you know, while they, of course, get his input, that's a decision that's made by site location specialists within the United States Post Office. He indicated in the short term, he would see what he could do to address parking concerns at the, at the office. He also mentioned that, again, you know, any decision regarding a new post office is ultimately up to individuals at a higher level, but that he would be the appropriate person to begin the conversations and then kind of work up the chain from there. So the, the letter pretty much boils down to, you know, a request for a written action plan and timeline that would ensure that our growing community is adequately served by our local post office, both now and moving into the future.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Did he make any mention of the reason why they closed the annex at Roberts Market over on Viewpoint and 89A?
He did. The landlord was not interested in renewing that lease, and so, and there is currently a moratorium on opening those kind of secondary post office locations. So once that location closed, they were unable to open another.
Good. Any other questions? Ben, you'll have that letter for us to sign?
I do not have it in front of me, but I will bring it with you.
It's in your packet, Mayor.
I don't have the packet, so I'll have to get it.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Ben, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Any other comments? If they are not, we'll go on next to number eight, Consent Agenda. And tonight, it'll be Mike Whiting that's going to read it. Run number eight. Number eight.
Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Number A, or I should say, Letter A, approving the April 26, 2018 Council Minutes. Item B, approving the regularly scheduled Town Council meeting dates for fiscal year 2018-2019. C, approving the off-track, paramutual wagering license of Turf Paradise for antelope lanes. D, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the town and HUSD to continue the school resource officer program for 2018 through 2021. E, accounts payable. F, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents to accept the Library Sciences Technology Act, LSTA, grant of $30,000 to fund Community Assessment Plan. G, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents to accept the LSTA grant of $4,000 to fund the Gateway to Citizenship Program. And H, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents to accept the LSTA grant of $3,000 to fund the Make It a PVPL Program.
Good job, thank you, Mike. And by the way, good job getting three grants, total $37,000. Anyone want to pull that up for discussion, or do you want to prove it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, great.
To approve the consent agenda.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
Does anybody got? I don't have anything up here.
It didn't come up, Diane.
Let me try to reset the system, Mayor.
Do what now?
I'm just going to try and reset the screen.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, I don't know what's going on here. Stoop, I rule, call, Mayor, it's not resetting.
Not working? Okay.
How do you wish to vote, Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, then we'll move on to number nine, new business. A is consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2049, revising Town Personnel Policy Number 2-24 and Policy Number 2-25, as recommended by the Personnel Board. Karen?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Nice to be with you this evening. Our current policies for drug and alcohol in the workplace has not been updated since 2002. And since that time, there has been changes in state laws as well as best practices. In particular, the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act, or AMMA, Prop 203, was implemented back in November 2010. We all know, under the AMMA, that Arizona employers may not discriminate against a person in hiring, terminating, or imposing any term of condition of employment or otherwise penalizing that person based upon their status of a qualified patient testing positively for marijuana components. Since 2010, we have treated such drug testing as positive in the same light that we would any prescription drug. But in the last several months, the police department has been working at implementing internal policies and procedures for their staff. And the question was posed about AMMA versus the conflicts in federal law. We also know, of course, that possession, use, sale, distribution, or transportation of marijuana for any reason is still a violation under federal law. And so, the AMMA does not apply to our police officers, they're exempt because of that. And the question was posed, our policies really didn't address the distinction with civilians, particularly in the regards to federal grants that we receive. In 1988, with Congress enacting the Drug-Free Workplace Act, it specifically requires recipients of federal grants to maintain a drug-free workplace, and that we could be at risk of losing our federal monetary benefits if we fail to maintain the regulations within that act. And so, as we explored that, it was important for us to update our policies so that we could make sure we document and explain the differences between AMMA and the Drug-Free Workplace Act towards all of our staff, including our civilians. With that effort, we are proposing that council update Town Policy Number 2-24, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace, as well as Policy Number 2-25, Drug and Alcohol Control. It has been reviewed by the Personnel Board as the revised policy's in front of you this evening, and they recommend as well that it be approved and adopted by council. So unless you have any other questions that I could answer specifically?
It's complicated. Anybody have any questions?
I also want to make sure and point out that we worked, HR drafted policies and worked a lot with Ivan and his staff. We really appreciate their assistance in making sure we're making it clear, the distinction between those two pieces of legislation, and how we can apply them as staff to the individual protocols, including things like reasonable suspicion, post accident, random drug screening, RCDL testing, and pre-employment testing as well.
Good. Now, any questions? I'm glad you're doing it, Karen, it's a tough one.
Hey, part of the job.
Good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, any motions, demotions, commotions? Marty?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Need a second, right? Motion authorize the mayor in his absence the Vice Mayor to sign Resolution Number 2049, revising Town Personnel Policy Number 2-24 and Policy Number 2-25, as recommended by the Personnel Board, by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote? Oh, call the vote, whatever it is.
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and I?
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on into number nine, B. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2050, approving FDP 18-006 Jasper Model Home Complex and assigning the agreement under Proposition 207. Rick, you are up.
Thank you. Mandalay Homes brings you a final development plan, which is proposed to you to be approved by resolution. The final development plan illustrates seven single-family homes that would be available as well as others in the 356 slots that are nearing completion in Jasper. Those sitting on the council, if you want to have an opportunity to go out there, they've done a lot of work. It's amazing to see. They've also, as you heard previously, planted a lot of trees along the trail, and those trees are growing. But, you know, your action this evening to approve this would accommodate future residents of Jasper to look at products that would be available for purchase. Also, one of the lots is utilized for parking for that model home complex. Our town code has evolved over time, and now you can approve through final development plans, the model home complexes, which are hallmark of some of the development that we've seen here in Prescott Valley for the last 15 or 20 years. The site plan and layout of the units meets or exceeds the town standards on that, we would support and recommend approval. I'd respond to your questions, Mayor, your direction.
Questions, anyone?
I have a comment.
Mary?
Today, I had the opportunity to experience Prescott Valley 40 years ago. And why do I say that? Well, because over by Granville, in all that development, and the wind blowing, I remember the stories that said you could see Prescott Valley because it was a layer of dirt, dust at like 4:00 in the afternoon. I was there today.
Not necessarily a good thing.
But it's all good. I just thought I'd share that with you.
Well, and just going to continue, the, you're mentioning the dirt work that's going on in principally now, Granville, the dirt work's almost done in the Jasper project. And I hope people bear with us, because they're doing the best they can to keep down the dust with millions of gallons of water that they're putting on it for the purpose of compaction as well as dust control. But the wind does blow here.
Well, and please don't take that in the wrong way. I actually am not complaining about it. I was just, all of a sudden, had a memory of what it was.
Good. Marty?
Yeah, I have a quick question. The, the map that was shown on the screen, all of those are going to be individual models of different types of houses that are, that are possibly being built?
Yeah, there will be seven of, I think there's going to be a total of 15 models, but the configuration of seven will be illustrated as single-family residences that you can walk in and experience, and then talk with sales staff, of course, if you're choosing to purchase a model placed someplace else in, in the community. But they will illustrate seven of, I believe, the 15 total configurations that'll be available by Mandalay Homes in the Jasper Project.
I don't think I've seen that many in any of our developments, so that's, that's incredible. So it should be, should be interesting to take a walk through, so.
Absolutely.
Good. Any other, Laura?
That's actually what I wanted to comment on. That is unusual and has been for some time because our economy. I see it as a very positive sign. And I compliment all of them for stepping forward in, in a period of time when we are recovering and doing well. But for them, it's still uncertain, so I'm grateful.
And I celebrate as well when developers close down their existing model complexes and sell off the parking lot because they build a new house and they move to a new complex. In the case of Granville, I think he does have seven or eight units there as well. And as you've noticed, they're going like hotcakes, so he's moving into future development phases. It's a good time to live and prosper in Prescott Valley.
Good. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Motions, demotions, commotions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to authorize the mayor in its absence the Vice Mayor to sign Resolution Number 2050, approving FDP 18-006, and to sign any agreement under Proposition 27 by a voice vote.
Good. Second, anyone?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the, call the vote? Diane?
Mayor Skook?
I'm going to vote yes.
Vice Mayor and I?
A big yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. We move on to C. Consideration of approving the amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Atkins, Atkins North America Incorporated for Design Services for the Conceptual Flooding Solutions in the amount not to exceed $91,835. Ron, or Norm, Ron?
FEMA, yes. If Council would recall, in 2016, Yavapai County Flood Control District was in the process of upgrading and updating their flood control maps. And they were receiving grant funding from FEMA to accomplish that. We had a opportunity to partner with them to upgrade our floodplain maps as well and receive some of that grant funding. And so, we took that opportunity, and we received about $200,000 in grant funds. We knew that we had deficiencies in our floodplain maps. We had errant floodplain shifts in the latest round of the 2010 floodplain maps that we have versus the earlier ones, which I believe were around 2,000. So somewhere in there- So somewhere in there, FEMA had shifted some of the floodplanes. It affected Granville. It affected some of the subdivisions. We also saw typographical errors, streets that were misnamed or missing. We saw floodplain limits that were creeping seven or eight feet up the side of a hill, which didn't make sense. And we also saw a disparity in flows in our washes from what FEMA had versus what we had in our master drainage plan, which is really a custom-tailored hydrological study that we had done in 2003. So we knew that those flows were higher and probably more realistic and more accurate. So we wanted to incorporate that in a new FEMA model. And so, we did, and we were able to do it, and FEMA accepted it. And so, now we have a much more accurate depiction of our floodplanes. And so, we were limited on what we could do with our floodplain as far as remodeling. So if you notice on this exhibit here, we identified three of the four main washes that run through the core of the town. The one on the very left is Lone Cactus, and it runs down, all the way down through Rock Lane, all the way down to the Agra Freya. The second from the left is the Viewpoint Corridor. We actually had that done as a detailed study in 2015 as part of the Viewpoint Corridor projects that you've seen going on over the last few years. So that was not included. Third from the left is the Loose Drive Wash. It starts right over here, Loose Drive and Lone Cactus, runs up Loose Drive, then makes a turn, runs down under Robert Road, Spouse Drive, and it works its way down to Ranger Road. And then, the one all the way to the right is the Lake Shore Drive Wash. So we knew, as part of Phase 1, we wanted to go ahead, this would be the most effective ones to go ahead and have remodeled. And we did so. And we came up with higher flows. We came up with changes in floodplain limits. Some areas, we had, we took into account bridges, culverts, washes, that really weren't around back earlier when FEMA did the earlier round of mapping. We did some detailed surveying, and so we did come up with a different floodplain. And in some areas, we had 24 structures that are now out of the floodplain. Realistically, they were never in the floodplain. And we had 17 structures in the floodplain, which, I need to emphasize, they were always in the floodplain. We've just now more accurately discovered that they've always been in the floodplain. And so, we've identified a higher risk that they're at. And so, now we can go to them and say, hey, look, you guys have always been in the floodplain, so now you need to take steps to protect yourself. And so, we've done our due diligence to go ahead and do that. And I think that's important. It's really important. So now that we did that, the next step was with the 17 structures that are in. We wanted to retain Atkins and say, okay, we have more grant funding from this year's, fiscal year's $800,000, which we received from Yavapai County. So let's take some of that money and have you guys give us a study, give us some options. What can we do for mitigating these areas? Give us some drainage options, drainage design options, and then do a cost-benefit analysis and prioritize these projects. What can we do? Identify the areas that we can do and can afford as one project rather than multi-phase projects. And so, they did that. And we came up with quite a few areas. That worked. All right. So these are some of the areas around, down the Loose Drive Corridor. And we've kind of circled just those areas. We kind of have some potential projects that we could do and what the cost-benefit would be, how many structures would be removed, cost. All of that is in those. And then, we have the Lake Shore Drive. These were actually smaller projects that were actually identified as a higher cost-benefit. And so, these are actually the top three projects that we could do right off the bat as soon as we have funding. And then, there was one up on Loose Drive, which is all the way to the very left. And these projects are all channelization or culvert improvements. And so, we had them take a look at it. And of the top four, they're all about $250,000 apiece to do the construction. So now, what we want to do, we still have about $92,000 left in Yavapai County Flood Control Dollars from this fiscal year. So we said, okay, well, let's bring you onboard. How many designs can you give us for that remaining funding? And they came up with the top four. And so, that's why I'm here. We would like to go ahead and have Atkins go ahead and move forward and give us designs for those top four areas. And we'll have those things shelf-ready, and when we have a funding source, then we can just jump right on, and we can get them going. We're also into the next phase now of our mapping process, which we just got approval from FEMA a few weeks ago. It's the second phase, which is to go ahead and correct, not just here, but other areas in town, correct some of the deficiencies that are in the floodplain maps, the errant floodplain shifts and typo errors. And most importantly, what we want to do, because I use a GIS viewer to do my floodplain determinations, I get in there and I look at something like this right here. But right now, what I have is aerial imagery that's antique. And so, they have what's called an orthorectified aerial imagery, and it's a very, very detailed imagery. And it's referenced in the same survey reference points that the floodplain layer is referenced to. Right now, what you have is, you just have a best-fit, you have an imagery layer, and then you have a best-fit floodplain layer that makes sense. They just move it and morph it, and it kind of makes sense, but it's not accurate. And so, we're really looking forward to the orthographic imagery, and we're actually one of the very last communities in the state to have received it. So, don't know why Prescott just got theirs here recently. So we're really looking forward to that. And that brings me to the letter, Mayor. We'd like to send a letter of support under your signature to FEMA, just saying, hey, we're here in northern Arizona. We're the largest community in Yavapai County. Looking forward to having our orthographic imagery. We fully appreciate what you've done for us, and we fully support what you're doing moving forward. I've recently gotten word that probably late fall, we will get our preliminary mapping. And then, we'll have a chance to comment and look at it, make sure all the shifts are corrected and everything. And then, from there, it's probably going to take another 18 months before those maps, all of the maps, become effective. These right here, these washes right now are effective maps. They became effective last June. So, looking forward to it. It'll make my job a lot easier when I have residents or real estate people coming in and say, is this in the floodplain? If it's right on the border, is it in or is it not? And I'm like, I have a tough time making those determinations. Sometimes you have to have a surveyor go out and double-check. So, looking forward to it.
Good. Any comments, questions? Marty?
Forgot to show you a letter, Mayor. There it is, sorry.
Yeah, I have a question. Okay, according to this, we're going to have them do the conceptual floodplain, okay? And then, you say it's going to be $850,000 per site to correct? And we'll do that when it's?
No, we've identified the top four projects prioritized versus cost-benefit. The lowest cost, the highest benefit. And each of those projects are mostly channelization projects, like Loose Drive is one, just channelizing Loose Drive, making that channel to the right-hand side as you're heading down Loose Drive towards Robert Road, making it a bigger channel. That would be one of the, so they're all about $250,000.
Okay. And so, we're not going to do that until we're able to fit it in the budget? Or are you planning on having that done almost immediately after the floodplain design is completed?
We'll need a funding source. Because our floodcontrol dollars, typically, we get $600,000 a year in floodcontrol dollars. The next two years are tied up in Sunset Lane, the Sunset Lane Project.
Okay, so.
Be able to.
Okay, so if we have the plan to go, that shows what needs to be done, okay? How long will it be that that plan is still valid before there's more erosion or whatever else that might take place that would skew the plan?
I think they'll be, I think they'll be good. They'll be good for some time. I think they'll, and we can go, if we need to go in and tweak the plan, we'll have that ability to do that sometime down the road.
Laura?
I don't know how many sitting here remember what it used to be like on Mission Lane. Water went in the front door and out the back door. I am so grateful that we're no longer experiencing those kind of things. And these kind of projects is what prevents that. That's the reason I wanted to mention it. I do have a concern, Ron. Because there's been some changes, and I heard you say you've always lived in a floodplain, are we, have any litigation concerns about all the shifting and changing?
No.
Thank you, because I just, I didn't want to deal with that on my pillow tonight. We've worked long and hard in this community, and we've been very, very sensitive to our residents. And of course, funding always gets in the way, so I compliment your foresight, and I'm excited that we find a way to go forward.
Thank you. And we have been proactive, because immediately after we identified those 17 people, we had the county surveyor come over and for each of those properties do an elevation certificate. And it's a FEMA document, and it's a very detailed survey. And what it does is, it looks at the property, and it looks at the finished floor elevation of the structures in relation to that floodplain or that base flood elevation. And so, what that does is, that determines your level of risk. If your floor is three feet under the flood elevation, you're going to be at a higher risk of damage than if it's only three inches. And so, we had those done for all of those 17 properties. That's what you use to determine your level of risk when you're getting flood insurance. So we did that right off the bat and got that to those folks.
Mary?
Yeah, Ron, I want to thank you because I do remember you personally helping me with the family. And as I'm listening to you and thinking about this, I'm thinking about them. And so, these 17 properties, will we be able down in the future to do anything to help with this? Is that where we're going on this? Or, I'm sure you said that, and I might not have picked it up.
Yeah, these projects are either to completely channelize the floodplain and remove these structures or some of these properties that are, can now be developed.
Right.
So it's either to that. Some areas, we can't do that. There's a couple of areas on Loose Drive where the houses are literally three feet below the, so what we can do is channelize as much as we can through there, and we'll be able to lower that floodplain elevation, but they're still going to be in the floodplain.
All right.
There's just nothing we can do about it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all your work.
Good. Mike?
Yeah, just wondering, so those 17 homes are kind of scattered throughout the map we saw, not necessarily in one particular area.
That's correct.
And that was one of my questions, was the priorities you took, which were the low-cost, high-benefit. And that's going to be in the Loose Drive area. So we have several of those homes that will be affected by those three areas that you identified?
Yes. Let me see, my tally was, we'll have eight structures out of the four. We'll have eight structures and 31 properties, is what I'm seeing. But that's a little deceiving, because probably about half of those 31 properties are actually town properties, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Larry?
Well, those are properties as opposed to structures.
That's correct.
When you talk about that number. And it's very important to point something out, that prior to this study, most of these properties were not in the 100-year floodplain.
Right.
Okay? What you've got is a movement of that floodplain, and we're going to fix it. And thank you, FEMA. You went ahead and put some properties that were not in that classification and put them in that classification by moving a line. Okay? So we're going to do what we can to do projects at a low cost by widening channels and not turning any of our drainages into the Los Angeles River with concrete-lined banks. That's not what we're about. But we can take those properties that because of the movement of a line and put on a map, now, all of a sudden, there are, what's the number, Ron? 14 of those properties that were not in the flood?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. That, we're talking 17 homes that did not have a problem before. Now, because of the movement of a line, they have a problem. And so, we're going to go fix that problem, because it's not their fault.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Anything else, Ron?
No, sir.
Anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to professional services agreement with Atkins North American Incorporated for Design Services for Conceptual Flooding Solutions in four areas in the amount not to exceed $91,835.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you do the, roll on the vote?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Good. Well, this is a very important one. Okay, we got the next one. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2052 approving and adopting certain listed revised high-risk PVPD policies. Chief, you brought a heavy-duty one to us. Very complicated.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. If you're thinking, didn't we just do this a couple of months ago? You're right, we did. As you know, the council is required to approve certain policies that are considered high-risk. That's been going on for many years. But now, going forward, we have hired, as I explained a couple of months ago, we've hired a company that now, that's their expertise. They look at police policies, and they have developed our new policy manual. And they will be providing frequent updates as laws change, whether it's domestic violence, child laws, anything else. Anytime those laws change, anytime we look at a policy and with, working with our legal counsel, working with human resources, and we determine a change is needed, we will be bringing these back to you every time for you to take a look at. So the list tonight is vehicle pursuits, firearms, officer-involved shootings, use-of-force review boards, temporary custody of juveniles, and temporary custody of adults. I'll have, answer any questions that you might have.
I think that would require hours of a study. Question, Mary?
No, sir.
Anyone else? Laura?
It's a changing world, and it's really affecting our fire and our police departments more than that makes sense to me. So thank you for being willing to deal with it, because it isn't pleasant. I didn't even enjoy reading it. And I don't have to do it. All I had to do was read it. It'll be interesting to see how many more changes and updates. So I expect more to come forward, and I thank you for your diligence.
Thank you.
Rick? Any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, just curious, do we have a use-of-force review board in place right now?
Yes.
Okay.
But the way it came and it originally went through, we've looked at it since we've had a couple of uses of force. And when we looked at the way the board was made up, I looked at it and I thought, well, you know what, this isn't making much sense. So for example, you have an officer involved in a shooting, an officer-involved shooting. The use-of-force review board sits down. Well, on the board, the way it was written was, it was the person's immediate supervisor, the commander of that division. I'm thinking, well, that's not really very impartial. We need an unbiased view of these incidents to give it the credibility that we need to go forward. So we ended up reviewing, or revising it. And I can't say, I can't promise that we're going to look at it again in a month and say, you know what, maybe we need to tweak it here, and then we're going to have to bring it back again.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Chief? That's complicated.
I agree.
Ready for a motion?
I think we are.
Motion to authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 2052 approving and adopting certain listed revised high-risk PVPD policies attached as Exhibit A by voice.
Good. Any second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you do the roll, call Diane? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Would you do the roll? Call Dan?
Having a technical issue, Mayor. One moment, please. Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
We have a passage.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm glad you're putting that in, in effect. Thank you. Okay, number ten, comments from the public. This time it'll be, Rick, ask for those.
Comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mail, mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda.
Greetings. Come on up. Introduce yourself for a.
My name's Glenn Brower. I wanted to go to the Citizens Academy. Probably these questions would have been answered there. But unfortunately, it was really overwhelming enrollment for there, but they got me scheduled for this fall. My question is that I'm from, actually retired out of Las Vegas, Nevada, and it has to do with the alcohol. Now, I know this, we talked about the personnel and the alcohol restrictions and stuff like that. But I've seen some incidents on the road, on construction sites that I think may, I don't know how to address. Do we have an open container law in the, in the state of Arizona? Doesn't even know, is the chief of police would be here? We do. Open container for a vehicle? Yes. Yeah, for, we do have an open container law. Okay, great. I did witness some alcohol consumption. Now, I was in the construction trade, so I know that there's a lot that goes on in construction sites. I happen to be on a board of directors of an HOA, and we had more control of it because it was a gated community where we didn't allow construction people to bring alcohol into the establishment. I know it'd be very difficult to try to do, monitor that on our construction sites, other than ask the general contractor if they would just control that a little bit better. But I have witnessed alcohol on construction sites. And what I don't want to have is the be, be consuming alcohol and then driving on the roads. So I don't know how we're going to address that. And I probably will know more about this when I attend the Citizens Academy. But I was just trying to get some input on it from the council tonight.
Thank you, Glenn. Meredith, did you have a comment? Introduction? No? Chief, does, hello, chief?
Mayor, Council, Ivan, Larry, Diane, good to see you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to come before the council tonight and, and thank you for your ongoing support and partnership with the fire department. We had another example of this the other day with a fire on Los Flores. And, you know, the police department and our investigators have worked very closely together. And then your Public Works Department, I know Norm Left came out and assisted as well because of all the stuff at this particular property. We needed some heavier equipment to dig that out. So, but beyond that, just the, the partnership and the ongoing relationship that we've built with the town and the town taking part with us, we greatly appreciate that. And I appreciate the relationship that Larry and I have, as well as Chief Gerald and I. I did want to let you know, I know it's getting to be summertime, and traffic on the trails are picking up. And we've always struggled with that a little bit because we didn't have the appropriate equipment. We just took delivery of a brand-new UTV that has a slide-in unit for medical calls. That is going to be street legal with street legal tires. It's going to be at our Station Fifty off of Valley View. So it'll have quick access to the Glassford Hill Trail, as well as the, the other trail over in this area, and can be used for big events in the entertainment district, which I think will be good for the community. So just wanted to let you know that that is, has been delivered and is under construction. I'd also like to thank the police department on behalf of one of our captains. It was his son that was hit the other day out here on Lake Shore. So I just came back from Phoenix Children's again. I was there Tuesday and then this afternoon. The police department has been just wonderful with the family. And the Rendles wanted to send their appreciation to the, to Chief Gerald and his personnel for that support. Right now Nathan hasn't woke up yet, but things are looking okay. So, sorry. The other thing I'd like to get out, because I've seen a lot in social media lately, unfortunately, the sixteen-year-old driver. I'd like that family to know that our thoughts and prayers are with her and them as well. There have been some vile comments on social media from people who have no idea the situation and are just making accusations about things. And that's, that's a very sad state that we live in when those things happen. And it's truly unfortunate. But from the fire department, our thoughts and prayers are with that driver and her family as well. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments? No? If there is no, no further comment, then the next item would be to get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Diane, we have the motion in a second.
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Waiting as adjourned. Thank you all for coming. It's good to see you all.